Thank you all for being here. Now declare the 557th meeting of the Board of Trustees reopened. As everyone rise, please see the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Donnelly, please follow the roll for attendance.
Mary Adams?
Present.
Anthony Canaccio?
Present.
John DeGrace?
Present.
Arnold Drucker is not here. Jorge Gordon is not here. Edward Powers?
Present.
Jeffrey Prime?
Present.
Farouk Amin?
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a call.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. The minutes of March nineteen, two thousand and thirteen, are they presented for approval?
Anthony?
Do I have a motion to consider these minutes?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against, any extension, so moved. Reports of the standing committees?
For the Finance Committee, like they review the expenditures. Resolve that requisition number six one two three two in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and two dollars as requested by the CIO of the Information Technology Services Department to provide IT network hardware, Juniper Switches, for our data centers in the library and Building G as part of the overall network upgrade effort. This is phase three of a three-phase project and the funding source is the student's pay.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against, any extension, so moved.
Second item, resolve that requisition number six one two three four in the amount of seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty dollars as requested by the CIO and the ITS to purchase one hundred and sixty HP Compact Elite DVD three hundred Ultra Slim desktop PCs for the library computer labs. This is a cumulative fiscal year expenditure, a total of ninety-one thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and forty-one cents has been extended, expended for this commodity this fiscal year, not including the proposed expenditures. Requisitions in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand and twenty-five dollars and ninety-two cents have previously been approved by the Board of Trustees for the purchase of computers college-wide this fiscal year at the twelve eighteen twelve meeting. Funding source, uh, is students' pay.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. Before I request a motion to consider this item, it's my understanding that there is a speaker that wanted to speak about this. Is Mr. Samal Amin present?
Yes.
So just, just, uh, just for, let's get the rules straight, just a lot of three minutes.
Hello, Board of Trustees. My name is Samal Amin. I've been a full-time technologist in the Library Department for the past thirteen years. I'm also a virtualization engineer certified in application desktop and server virtualization. I'm here today to talk to you about our Student Information Commons Research Computer Lab as well as the classrooms in the library. Currently, we have a total of two hundred and seventy-seven machines for student access within the library. Two hundred and one machines are Think Clients using products from the Citrix Corporation. This virtual computing system allows users to run computer applications without having to use them on expensive, power hogging individual computers. Use of virtualization systems is the way most forward-looking institutions have been moving towards for public computing. We were pioneers in the use of virtualization offering versions of it since the year two thousand. This latest version of this system has been running almost flawlessly for the past three years. Under the previous administration, NASA Community College purchased eight hundred and twenty-two licenses with the intent of growth on our campus. These licenses entail us to virtualize servers, desktops, and applications. We are currently running twenty hosts which house seventy-four of the campus' virtual servers. Since January first, two thousand and thirteen, for reasons unknown under administrative directive, we have been told that anything with the name Citrix is going to be removed from our campus and replaced with old-fashioned individual personal computers. This means new equipment would have to be purchased to replace our current environment, which has many years of life still left on it. The library has tried to go green. In doing so, we researched what equipment and setup would give us the most energy savings as well as being cost-effective. Since this money was coming from students' tech funds, we wanted to make sure we would get the most bang for our buck. In calculating our costs, we calculated a three-year return on investment. We have now come to the three-year ROI mark. Now, let's consider the costs. To make our current environment two hundred and fifty licenses, it would cost the college fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars annually. To replace this equipment and license it with a new equipment proposal, it would cost the college approximately two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. The new proposal will also incur a yearly renewal cost of thirty-eight thousand dollars after year one. Issues with maintenance timing and redundant personnel have been resolved. In light of the obvious cost advantages of keeping our current virtualized environment, I'm asking the Board to encourage the administration to reconsider their plan to discard or replace the Citrix system. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Just quickly, you mentioned a fifteen thousand dollar annual figure, what did that represent?
Correct. That's for our current system right now, so every year it will cost fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars to maintain our current system.
And you mentioned a two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar figure, what does that represent?
Correct. That's going to replace all the machines that's currently there, that will also replace all the backend infrastructure, and that's to virtualize using a different software, doing the same thing that we're doing right now.
Is that also an annual figure?
Not the two hundred and thirty-three. The annual figure was a thirty-eight thousand dollars. So that would be a new annual figure to, to go forward from this point forward.
That's how the, that's how the two hundred and thirty-three thousand breaks down?
Correct. Well, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, I have the hand, I said I'll give everyone, and in the two hundred and thirty-three thousand, that's going to be hardware, software, and also maintenance.
So, um, just trying to get an understanding, why, why is there is being replaced and anything Citrix being taken out?
Well, prior to this, it's basically, it was only myself and one other person on the campus that was able to manage and administer anything that had to do with Citrix. So now, there's other people being trained on it, and that's why I don't think it should be replaced, because now it's going to be one personnel, so it's not going to be relying on one person or two, two people.
So, if I understand this correctly, what's happening, we have a very edge technology in the library?
Correct, yes.
Uh, which I have used on myself utilizes obviously space as far as the, we have in the library. It allows very small computer, allow a lot more space for the students to put their books and use it and even put home computers around. So because we need half the people, they're thinking about, what you're telling me is that we're replacing the whole system that we have right now, that we invested probably hundreds and thousands to put in.
Yep.
Replace that, invest more money into the older age?
Into the older age, and it's coming from tech funds.
So we're moving back in time, not, not advancing?
Exactly. So right now, corporations that are trying to invest into virtualization, virtual applications, desktop servers, and go forward and try to make everything more eco-friendly and be, you know, less space, have everything going into the future age into cloud computing, we are now going backwards by replacing it with actual physical computers. That's what they're proposing.
Did you talk before the Finance Committee about this?
We brought this up to the administration and-
Did you go to the Finance Committee to avoid earlier today?
No.
Because that's really the place where you should make these statements, I mean, you're hitting me with something, I don't understand, I don't understand what you're talking about. I don't understand what anybody's talking about. I, I'm going to tell you, I mean, I, I don't know what to do.
While we're here, I think there's some-
Right, maybe, maybe to offer some clarity, I think there's a Hamilton Lozada here?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Hamilton Lozada, and I'm speaking on behalf of Richard Lawless. Was unable to be here today due to a prior vacation. I'm here to discuss the viability of the virtual desktop infrastructure that was currently in use in the library. The initial cost of this virtual infrastructure was approximately four hundred thousand dollars and supports one building with approximately two hundred Think Client devices. Early hardware and software maintenance costs for this infrastructure was over forty thousand dollars and going forward will be over sixty thousand dollars per year. This is an extremely expensive solution for what equates to three computer labs. Supporting, uh, support for this infrastructure consists of one certified administrator and a half dozen TAs with limited knowledge of the system. This means there's only one person on campus that can truly support this system. This is especially troublesome when you consider the fact that this administrator does not work on Fridays and takes an entire month off during the summer, essentially leaving no one on campus that is capable of supporting this infrastructure. The library's support staff form me of many difficulties they have in supporting this infrastructure. I'm told students complain on a daily basis about incompatibility issues with their USB devices, slowness, and constant login problems. With a virtual desktop solution, all the applications and user data is stored in a centralized server creating a single point of failure. When this centralized server fails, every device connected to it fails, effectively rendering, or rendering all two hundred devices useless. In fact, just two weeks ago, during a break, the entire system was down for eight days because of a failed software update, and the only person capable of fixing it was on vacation and could not be reached. The students were lined up to the front door of the library waiting to use the PCs in the lower commons area all week. This problem is compounded tenfold during the regular semester because of the bi-weekly six-hour maintenance windows that are performed during daytime school hours. The student impact during this maintenance window is tremendous. ITS is recommending a replacement of this virtual infrastructure with a PC-based solution that is currently used in sixty-four labs across the campus. Unlike the existing virtual infrastructure, supporting these PCs does not require specialized training or certifications. The PCs do not require specialized mounting hardware and have the same exact footprint as the existing Think Clients. While the power required for these PCs is about twice as much than that of a Think Client, when the PC goes into sleep mode, it uses far less power than the Think Clients do. When you average out the electrical usage over a twenty-four hour period, the amount of consumed electricity is virtually the same. When the library was renovated three years ago, we had to force out the design electrical system based on PC power requirements, so the existing electrical infrastructure is more than capable of supporting a PC-based lab. The cost of replacing the existing infrastructure with PCs is actually seventy-seven thousand dollars. Unlike the existing infrastructure, there are no recurring hardware or software maintenance costs, and the PCs will not have to be replaced for at least five years. This represents the savings of two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars over five years and a return on investment of fifteen months. The servers that support the existing infrastructure will need to be replaced within the next five years. If you take that into consideration, the cost of replacing these servers, the cost of replacing servers, the amount of money saved over the next five years nearly doubles the four hundred thousand dollars saved.
Thank you, Dr. My experience is that computers that are used, uh, who sometimes have pretty general best, two and a half years, three years, and I find from my colleague over here that, uh, he says the computers in the library should be, they're yours, but they should last about a given length. You mentioned a five-year life, which I-
That's right. We use it five years, uh, we replace our computers, five years to replace-
You have a five-year replacement cycle, I think, I think, college?
Yep.
So, I, I just have a couple of questions, just want to kind of like, uh, have a better understanding on this. So, one, we're going to be replacing this virtual computers with physical computers. Each computer will be replaced with the hardware and-
That's right.
-everything. Now, obviously, isn't that consuming more power? Because by now, it, it is consuming more power than, because right now, we have a small device. Now we're going to have a big tower, so it's, it's-
The, the size of the Ultra Slim PC is, has the same exact footprint-
Okay.
-as the HP Think Client. You can actually put it underneath the monitor and you can gain more space on the desk.
So it will consume more power?
It will consume more power during, while it's in operational mode, but the PCs go into a sleep mode when they're not being used. If you average it out, they're only being used about a half a day, so twelve hours of the day, they drop down to a sleep mode where they consume just over one watt of power. So if you average it out over twenty-four hours-
Yeah.
-it's virtually the same amount of power being consumed at the end of the day.
And, and can you maybe, um, educate me a little bit about, I know as far as a computer, PC in specific, tend to get a lot of viruses. And when I say that, I mean, you know, I personally had problems many times when my computer got into a virus, I had to take it to Staples, you know, have it looked at and, and get it repaired. And this, this cost, it costs a lot of money. Now, with these PCs being physical, because I know right now they're virtual, so affected by virus, I think, uh, my understanding is a little bit harder, because it's, it's a virtual computer, so everything's more restricted, what the student can and cannot do on a computer, versus if you have a physical computer, they're more open to being affected by virus, costing us money, repair time, not to mention not being able to use their computer at the same time. I mean, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to put a visual here because-
Why don't we let him answer your virus question then?
Oh, okay, yeah, please.
Actually, not the case. Uh, we, we run the CAFI on the network twenty-four seven. Uh, if a machine does become infected, we can take that machine down, reimagine the machine, and it's like brand new again.
So I, just to clarify, because I think Farouk brought a good point. The virus software is on the network-
Across the network.
-not the individual PCs-
Right.
-for either the Think Client or the PC.
Right. But it's actually a clock that sits on, on each PC.
Right.
Okay.
Network blocking.
All right, I mean, I'm just trying to, trying to think about it, like, I, I know, I know a little bit of technology, I don't know much, I'm a student, you know, I'm a little exposed to it. As far as virtual computer, when I use it, I never had a problem with the USB, and as far as my college students, and I talked to a lot of students, and their usage, they never had any concern that you brought up, so I don't know what kind of facts are on that, but I can say I've never seen that happen. But as far as virtualization and technology-wise, from, from what he brought up, I, I think it's, it's, it's very important that we move forward in technology, not backward.
I agree.
Now, and nevertheless, I think we have invested vast amount of money until today, you know, getting these computers, putting up the servers, and obviously training somebody who can maintain that. And I think the biggest problem here, it's, it's not to say this, this up-to-date technology, let's see how we can fix it and replace the whole thing and invest so much money, but rather, you know, I, I think the biggest problem, you mentioned that we didn't have someone to look or fix the computer or server, we had, we had time gaps where no one was there, students had to wait. I, I think the problem is that we don't have someone working who knows the program to fix the problem, rather than replacing the whole infrastructure that we already have that we invested money in. You know, that, that, that's my personal opinion, I think that, that the problem is not the system, the problem is, is really who can fix the problem that we have, it's, that, that's what it is. And I don't see investing hundreds of thousands more, you know, in it.
We're investing seventy-seven thousand dollars. That's saving two hundred and-
Hold on one second, Mr. Farouk, that brings up a question of mine, because I've heard different figures in terms of what the, what the replacement cost would be, and then you, you just mentioned seventy-seven thousand, I think Mr. Amin had mentioned two hundred and thirty-three thousand.
Right. His, his numbers are based on the assumption that we're replacing the virtual Think Client, the Think Client's with virtual, um, PC, virtual software on a, on a regular PC. Now, that was one of the considerations, it's an expensive solution, so we're not going to do that. I mean, the biggest advantage here is if, if, if the existing system goes down, it's all central. So if it goes down, all of the computers are down. That whole building is down essentially, everything except the lower commons, which is on PCs.
You mean all of the computers, you mean the network or the computer itself?
No, 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 the computers, the network's still up, because the printers are still working, the wireless is still working, and the PCs in the lower commons are still working, it's a hundred and fifty or so PCs down in the lower commons, I just, so it's not the network. So, it's not just a matter of support of the lack thereof, it's, it's a matter of if it goes down, and it happens, it's down the entire week of, of spring break, from Sunday to Sunday. Monday morning, that person's on vacation, is he calling one of the supporters? That's not the only problem.
Well, if we have somebody to support it, I think that would eliminate that problem that we didn't have to support, and also, I can tell my computer, if the time it was affected by a virus, it was, I had to take it down, you know, you understand, so I have to take it down. So I can see, I can easily, easily see that it may seem right now like it's on a smaller picture, it may seem like, yeah, seventy-seven thousand dollars, but I think the overall cost to replace what we already have, it's going to be a lot more than what we say, and you know what, quite frankly, I think that, that happens a lot of time, and it's completely understandable, but I just don't see the reason behind, uh, you know, just saying, hey, Citrix, we're not going to use that at all. You know, we're, we're trying to save money here, you know, we're, we're in a tough economy, we're not saying, hey, we don't have a guy to fix the problem, we're always down for one week, let's replace the whole thing that's going to cost us that much money.
May I suggest, we've, we've gotten a lot of information from you, Mr. Lozada, and from you, Mr. Amin. May I suggest that, I, I don't know if you have something prepared as well, another second. Amin has distributed some documents. I, I don't feel comfortable voting at this, this stage.
Who are you, by the way? I'm a salesman, I'm not a administrator.
I'm, uh, I work for Richard Lawless, uh, I'm a network engineer. I'm a network engineer at ITS.
What's the maintenance contract, is that included seventy-seven thousand dollars?
There is no maintenance contract, we basically go with a, uh, if it breaks, you throw it away. It's cheaper than, than maintaining, uh, all of these PCs. It will, it will. We replace, we'll replace the hard drive, we'll replace-
No, the computer I have.
I've got mine for seven years right now, so.
Well, that's because you're specialized in IT, you can fix it. But you see, I take it to Staples, and he doesn't know what to do with it, how much to all-
People here don't have to take their computers to Staples, we fix it.
How much did, how much did you say it was, was the cost to train individuals to maintain-
It's ten thousand dollars.
This is a proprietary system?
Right. Ten thousand dollars per person for one week.
Excuse me, it's, um, it's actually five thousand dollars.
Okay. I was told ten thousand.
And the, the actual virtualization that we're talking about-
How much does it cost to replace?
Our servers have to actually be taken down from our environment.
Four hundred and eighty-six dollars?
Okay, so we have five thousand plus a hundred and eighty-six. I, I think we, I think it's a good idea, but-
Let me suggest that we, uh, I'll extend the motion table this until the next meeting, and maybe, maybe you, Mr. Lozada, and you, Mr. Amin, can provide us with some more information and we can, uh-
Absolutely.
-give this further forward.
Is there anybody on the board, maybe a subcommittee looking for this, so we can get some type of report from people that hopefully would look at all the facts and digest it for us?
I don't know if we have an IT committee, uh, we can certainly establish one, and then you play this ball, you will, you voluntarily?
Thank you. I mean, we can, we can address this.
I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to table this resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? So, table. Donations?
We have, um, we have three items that are being, we're going to combine these in this presentation, we have three items that passed during the Finance Committee meeting of donations, um, to the marketing, retailing, fashion, buying, merchandising, interior and fashion design department of NASA Community College. These donations are from Judy Wary, uh, Westbury, Betty Sue of Port Washington, and I apologize, I missed some, sir. What? Before. Betty, no, we have Betty Sue, Judy Wary, and Tony Holmes of Inwood. Uh, these items range in price from three hundreds, a high of three hundred dollars to a low of one hundred dollars, the middle item at a hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, the donations, again, are all to the same department, um, the Finance Committee recommends that we accept these donations.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All in favor? Any against, any extension, so moved. Facilities.
We saw that the rental fee be waived for use of NASA Community College Physical Education Complex for the twenty thirteen NASA County Empire State Games for the physically challenged, scheduled from Thursday, May thirtieth through Saturday, June first, and being further resolved that all associated personnel and maintenance costs will be borne by the user.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
Make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in fa- uh, yeah, all in favor? Any against, any extension, so moved. Uh, at this time, I make the motion under Article Four, Section Three of the Board's Rules of Procedure to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on the calendar. Do I have a motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Resolve that the resolution approved by the Board of Trustees at the March nineteen, twenty thirteen meeting of the Board regarding a job career fair sponsored by the county legislator, Kevin Abraham, to take place in June thirteenth, twenty thirteen, in the CCB Building during the hours from nine thirty AM to three thirty PM, be rescheduled for July tenth, twenty thirteen, from nine thirty AM to three thirty PM, under the same terms and conditions as were approved by the Board at the meeting of March nineteenth, twenty thirteen.
Do I have a motion to consider this item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against, any extension, so moved. Once again, I make a motion under Article Four, Section Three, as per the Board's Rules of Procedure to allow for the consideration of an item that does not appear on this calendar. Do I have a motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Ladies and gentlemen, resolve that the rental fee be waived for the use of college parking lot West Core A, which is the parking lot adjacent to the NASA County Firefighters Museum in conjunction with the annual NASA County Firefighters Memorial on Sunday, May fifth, two thousand and thirteen, from five PM to eight PM, to be hosted by the NASA County Firefighters Museum. Further resolve that all associated personnel maintenance costs be borne by the user. The reason for this is that each department in the NASA County takes a turn on hosting the annual memorial. This year, if Island Park was selected, but since they're in a situation of dire straits with regard to Superstorm Sandy, most of their equipment was destroyed, um, and half the town is still not there, um, they came to the NASA County Firefighters Museum so that we can all, me too, being a member of the New York Fire Department, can have a place to memorialize our firefighters for the year.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Do I have a motion to consider the item?
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against, any extension, so moved. Uh, reports of the temporary committee on the presidential search.
A couple of items to report. Am I live? Am I live?
Yes.
Uh, at the last meeting, several letters were read, were read into the record, a, a letter from the Alana Board to me, my letter back to the Alana Board, and Alana's letter with reply letter to me, and, and, um, I said that I would answer that reply, and I have. Due to pressing of the business, I have not been able to respond early to your reply of March one, two thousand and thirteen. When the Trustees Temporary Committee first met to set up organization of the search committee, it was mindful that in the opinion of SUNY, members of the Board of Trustees, and many members of the former search committee, that the last presidential search was encumbered by its large source. As you are aware, the NCC community is multicultural, multiracial, multi-ethnic, and diverse in many other ways, and the colleges' community includes many formal associations, alliances, clubs, and organizations. Each unique subsection of the committee would like a seat on the search committee. At our earliest organization meeting, the committee reached a seat belief that in order to operate expeditiously, efficiently, and effectively, that the size of the search committee must be contained. It also decided that if only one or two subsections of the NCC community were accommodated, that it would be unfair to all of the others that were not. We initially tried to contain the committee's size to twelve, but we had to go to fourteen to include all of the major college organizations which represent all subsections of the NCC community. In your reply of March one, two thousand and thirteen, you ventured to thought that the addition of Craig Wright, that a search committee on February nineteenth was inconsistent with my letter to you of February fourteenth, where I, where I said we were committed to a small committee. There was no inconsistency, as I will explain. At the first full such, search committee meeting on January twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, the faculty representatives complained that the search committee did not have an administrator. They argued that shared governance and collegiality always included administrators, and they convinced the temporary committee to make a decision to add an administrator. That decision was made before my letter to you of February fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Mr. Wright was added to the search committee at the very next meeting of trustees, which was on February nineteenth. Incidentally, much thought went into the naming of the administrator. How was he to be selected? By the acting president, by, by, by vote of the administrators, or by the trustees? We could have picked an administrator who was also a teacher, but we already had union leaders on the committee who were also teachers. We felt that Mr. Wright was unique because in addition to be an administrator, he is also a member of Alana and is the college's AAO, affirmative action officer, and those are the reasons he was put on the search committee as, as his fifteenth member. Craig thought he was put on because he was good-looking. I want you to know that the committee's size of fifteen, in my opinion, is much too large. It is extremely difficult to accomplish even simple matters such as scheduling meetings. My recommendation for any future search committees would be to keep the, to limit its size to twelve. Alana is under the impression that it is being treated differently. It is not. It is being treated the same as any other subsection of the college community. This does not mean that Alana and the other subsections do not have a voice. The larger NCC organizations, which include the membership of Alana, understand that[1777.36] NCC organizations, which include the membership of Alana, understand that they are there to communicate with their constituents and other parts of the college community. I am advised that Alana's membership includes administrators, faculty, and students. There is at least one representative on the search committee for each class of that membership. Frankly, I am in a lost understanding of your view that Alana was not treated fairly when it was treated just like every other group and where the search committee includes a person with Alana membership. Perhaps you believe that organizations have membership on the search committee. They don't. It is individuals, not organizations, who have membership on the search committee. As I explained to you at the last board meeting, if a teacher retires, he/she remains on the committee and will not be replaced by another. If nevertheless, your organization or any of its members decides to have me appoint a member of the search committee to act as your organization's contact person, please let me know. If you have any specific requests or questions that you have of me, please feel free to write me at my college email address, anthony.kanachio@ncc.edu. Please remember that no one, including me, is permitted under the confidentiality wills to disclose anything pertaining to the identity of applicants. Contrary to the last presidential search, this search has been as open as the law allows. At every Board of Trustees meeting, I give a public status report and answer all questions. My reports are available in the library as part of the meeting's minutes. Finally, I will address the attempts to enrich the applicant pool. We have a top-flight, nationally-recognized executive search firm, Wood Kiefer. At the direction of our search committee, twelve media sources are being used for outreach. Seven of the choices are specifically devoted to the objective of seeking diversity, inclusiveness, multicultural backgrounds, and people of color, these being diverse issues in higher education, Journal of Blacks in higher education, Hispanic Outlook, Women in Higher Education, American Associations of Blacks in Higher Ed, Latinos in Higher Ed, and LGBT in Higher Ed. In closing, I thank you for sharing your views. I think we share the same objective, to have an open, all-encompassing search for qualified applicants with a view to selecting the most qualified person that we can get as the new chief executive of this college. And it's signed by me. In terms of what's going on, the number of applicants is approximately forty at this juncture. There will be, application will be continuing to issue the president, so there's no cutoff date. But most of the applications will probably be with us within the next two weeks. We, the committee will meet on April 23rd to discuss the application that have been received, and to try to make some initial determinations. On the 25th, we have a conference with the search firm where we will try to go ahead and develop a list of candidates that we think worthy of interview. Our guidelines will not be to rank the candidates. It will be to go ahead and say, based on the papers we have before us, just the papers, the applications, who do we think is fit, is qualified to be chief executive of this college? The interviews will take place during the week of April 29th. It is scheduled for April 29th, a Monday, May 1st, a Wednesday, and May 2nd, a Thursday. We hope to complete all the interviews during that week. Will there be a second round of interviews? Perhaps. We don't know yet. What we hope to do is after we put together a list of people that we feel are qualified, worthy of consideration by the Board of Trustees, to forward that list first for a pass by the SUNY chancellor to make sure there's nobody objectional on there, and then to give that list to the Board of Trustees, who would then in turn interview and make a determination. If they do make a determination, then that individual will be presented to the SUNY Board of Trustees in Albany. That would have to be done though later than June 9th, if we wanted to have a president before the summer. That's pretty much where we are. Oh, I'm sorry. And then we have my colleague over here, Perukamim, the Asian member of our committee, who always has something to say, and I think you need my mind.
I just, I know I've brought this up a couple of times about the website. As of right now, if you go to the NCC Presidential Search site, we have pretty much the qualification and the link to Wood Kiefer. But we have, within past couple of weeks, worked on questions as far as what we'll ask. It'll be open to general public. So we did ask for recommendations that are open to everyone. If you'd like, you can go to the website. It should be up within the next day or so. And if you'd like to make a recommendation or a comment, you're more than welcome to do so. However, I just wanted to be clear that anything you say is not guaranteed we will use, but never, you know, I can't say that we won't. So please do make comments and recommendations if you would like to reach out and like to reach out to the committee. Do understand, and you can be confident, that every comment and recommendation will be reviewed and will be brought to the committee. Thank you.
Anything else?
I could go on for hours, but I don't want you to hear me.
Uh, report of the acting president.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Testing. One, two, three.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by just reiterating an eve-all-campus email that I sent out on Friday in regards to the Middle States Core Group. As we begin the Middle States process, the first step in the establishment of a team that will be working on the self-study report is the identification of the core members that will serve as the core group and lead the Middle States review effort. That team will be Jeanette Alvarez Ortiz, Tom Fernandez, Jill Bergreen, Maria Gonzalez, as an ex-official officer, and that will be led by Janice Grackett. I would also just like to announce that Janice Grackett has been announced by the State University of New York as the representative to the SUNY Council on Assessment. So I'm really excited about what she brings to the team and what she will be doing as we move forward in the self-study process. I also would just like to announce that, earlier than what we have been able to do in the past, the deans have at least provided a verbal notification to the chairs of the various departments of faculty lines that they will have for the fall semester. We have converted sixteen of the existing twenty-three temporary lines into probationary lines, and we have established an additional seven temporary lines in a go-forward fashion for the fall semester. As we become aware of additional vacancies that may occur, the deans will be working together with the executive vice president to make a determination in terms of how we're going to handle those vacancies. I would just like to take a moment to just recognize a couple of exciting things that have happened over the last week. Last Saturday, we had over two hundred middle and high school students on our campus for the Honors Art and Science Fair. You would have had, been there to have seen the excitement for them to talk about their projects and to share and to compete with one another for the first place in each of the categories. It was an activity that was well-organized, it was well-received, and the organizers of that event should be applauded for having done an exceptional job. The following day, we had the Care for Sandy Cherished album restoration effort, which we had a very good turnout for, and the community was very pleased with having had an opportunity to restore photographs that had been destroyed in Superstorm Sandy. Last but not least, we had a wonderful awards program just last night. It was the chancellor's awards program, recognizing the outstanding service from faculty in the areas of classified service, faculty service, scholarship and creative activities, and in teaching. The Jean Hassett was recognized for classified service, Lau Halliwell was recognized for faculty service, Rona Cassiola, William Monk, and Tanya Payne were recognized for scholarship and creative activities, and Rachel Rojas and Deborah Tyler were recognized for teaching. I would just like to take a moment to give them a round of applause. This coming Saturday, we'll have a very exciting and ongoing program. It's the prom boutique. The prom boutique is an opportunity for high school students who may not have the resources to purchase dresses and shoes and accessories for them to attend their proms. Nassau Community College will be making available for them a showroom where they can come in, select these items, outfit themselves, and be a part of those activities feeling very good and positive about themselves. That's going to be on Saturday. If you have a moment, I encourage you to stop by and be a part of that event. And last but certainly not least, well, it's not last, but the last announcement, is that we're going to be hosting our 12th annual golf outing, July 29th on Monday. I ask that you mark your calendars. If you're not a golfer, then I ask that you come and join us for the dinner. The dinner will be an opportunity for us to come together, to break bread, just have a good time, and raise money for Nassau Community College. At the last board meeting, when the report was given about the Presidential Search Committee, it was announced that there was not an internal candidate that had made application for the process. And I just wanted to speak to that for a moment. When I was selected as the officer in charge about eight months ago, it gave me an opportunity to make an assessment in terms of the extent to which I felt that I would be a good fit in working with the Board of Trustees, a good fit in working with the administration, a good fit in terms of working with the various constituent groups. And over that time, I've been able to make that assessment. It was an opportunity that few people had to make. And having gone through this process, and having made a real clear assessment in terms of what that fit would be for me, and my assessment of the extent to which I can lead this institution, I am pleased to announce my candidacy for the presidency, which was made this week. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, acting president. Let me say that I'm not a golfer, but I might be there hacking it up anyway on July 27th. Before I turn it over to the speakers list, I just wanted to read a statement to the, to the, to the audience. Just want to let everyone know that this board is well-aware of the various concerns of the various constituency groups that are on campus, respectful of all those concerns, and as a board, we try to make sure that those concerns are heard. There's obviously no greater issue going on this campus presently than the search for our next president. That person is going to lead this magnificent institution for very many years to come. And we want that president to be mindful of all the concerns of this campus, just as we are. Every voice is important in choosing our next president, and as critical as it is to include as many of those voices as possible, there is also just the unfortunate reality that every campus group cannot be represented. We struggle with this decision because we know that it is not a popular one. We also know that our ultimate goal is choosing a president in the most inclusive and expedition manner as possible. Our mission is to move this school forward in a positive manner. The men and the women on this board have pledged to do so. With that in mind, I'm confident that the search committee will uphold the values of diversity in looking for our next president, and the president will be a great leader that this great college deserves. I know the passion that all of you have for this institution, and it is that passion that makes this college a great one. And I ask you all not to temper that passion, but to please trust that this committee will do the right thing by this school and respect the principles of diversity that you all also bear. Thank you. First speaker is Kimberly Weiser. I just remind everyone that time allotted is limited to three minutes.
I'm waving my hand.
Thank you. So now, I mean, I allotted you your time already. I hope you don't mind giving it up again. Elaine Soffer. Good evening.
Thank you for this opportunity to address the board. I'm Elaine Soffer. I'm a lecturer in the LINK program. I'm here to remind veteran members of the board about the LINK program and introduce our program a little to the newer members of the board. LINK is made up of fourteen lecturers, each with at least one master's degree. We each teach one group of students twenty hours per week. Despite that heavy teaching and preparation load, we manage to devote many extra hours to other related activities. For example, we try to grow professionally by attending NCC lectures and workshops, like the Wiki workshop I attended this week. We do more than just attend events. We also sponsor workshops and panels at NCC. Two great examples are panels that two of our professors organized and moderated for this week's International Education Week. One of the, one of the panels was on international love, and it was attended by over one hundred NCC students and staff members, and was extremely enjoyable and informative. The other, on international etiquette, was just as worthwhile. That one, which took place today in a smaller space, had over sixty attendees. We attend and present at professional conferences off the campus, too. For example, one of our lecturers is co-coordinating a Long Island TESOL conference this weekend, and three of my colleagues are presenting. One of our LINK lecturers helped organize a recent New York State TESOL forum on the transition English language learners make from high school to college, and one of the other lecturers spoke at that forum. All of our non-teaching work is purely voluntary, with absolutely no external reward. We participate in and organize programs because we are highly qualified professionals who care about our students and the NCC community at large. We invite you to get to know us and our program better. Feel free to visit us at the North Attics whenever you can. Thank you.
Good evening. I would like to apprise the board of a very positive development that occurred today on campus. Through the efforts of the Writing Placement Committee, under my direction as the coordinator replacement for English and the overseer of the developmental writing program, a new course was approved today in the Campus-wide Curriculum Committee. English 100 will enable students who just missed placing into our first credit-bearing composition course, English 101, to enroll in an equivalent course, earning three credits, but also getting the developmental writing support they need to succeed in their advanced efforts at NCC. Research in developmental education at the college level indicates that while students lacking in math reading and writing skills must be supported in reaching entry-level college competence, they also must be offered multiple avenues to success in entering credit-bearing courses. This varied approach to placement and skill support, advanced by Columbia University Teachers College article published in the New York Times in February 2012, is reiterated in the report of the SUNY Task Force on Remediation, the SUNY Pathway to Success. Published in November of 2012, the report stresses not only alliances between high schools and colleges to clarify and advance college readiness, but also offering innovative strategies for campuses to expand accelerated developmental education program offerings in addition to successful existing programs. While our existing developmental course in writing, English 001, employs multiple strategies for success and has enjoyed an average seventy percent pass rate over the past eight semesters, we believe that this course is not right for every student needing writing help. Students come to us with vastly different levels of writing expertise. Indeed, while some are barely functionally literate, others are just a little rusty in sentence control or the essay format. To relegate these students who understand the basics but need practice to full semesters of basic writing instruction is to create frustration on the part of students who see their time and money being stressed. Student placement into developmental courses is a factor that has been directly linked to student attrition in colleges. We do not ascribe to the irresponsible conclusion that developmental courses must be eliminated in our open-access colleges. Until the lacune of our K-12 educational system are redressed, community college, as the best, most affordable hope for social and economic improvement for many of our nation's youth and returning adults, will continue to see weaknesses in math, reading, and writing that indicate developmental need. It is the ethical duty of NCC to stress that need, but it is also imperative that we find alternatives to full semester non-credit courses for our marginally skilled students. Although there is no silver bullet to solve the problems inherent in a population of high school graduates and returning adults whose writing skills are not equal to college-level writing tasks, English 100 offers the English department a chance to stratify our developmental offerings. Through this course, we can place the large cohort of marginal writers, almost passing writers, entering our college into credit-bearing composition, where they will not be restricted from courses in other disciplines, where they will feel better about their status as college students, where statistics show they are more likely to persist toward their degree or certificate goals, and where they will still be receiving the developmental support. support they need to succeed in their college work.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is our own initiative. It just happens to be.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, English 100 class, that will be once, as far as students pay for that course, it will be counted as a credit course as far as transfer to this institution?
Yes. This has passed the college-wide curriculum. It now has to go into the Senate for approval, and there are also some little things that we have to do about Gen Ed approval, so.
I just want to say congratulations on that achievement, and I think that definitely will help personally help to take that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Corning.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
You're welcome.
The college has admitted on public record that Donna Laestra was not a good fit for us. I submit that one can measure the effectiveness of a president by his policies. They are, in fact, his administration. So I'm asking, why then are some of the policies that were in effect in the previous administration still in effect now? Specifically, on the March 19th meeting, the Board of Trustees meeting that is, Professor Nicholson had listed four such policies that faculty have repeatedly brought to the attention of the Board of Trustees. When I looked at the minutes, I noticed that they were just summarized as previous policies. So I'd like to briefly just read the list of four that he mentioned and ask that they be entered into tonight's minutes. They were: the foundation's lack of transparency; the fact that the Tech Fund Committee was dissolved.
Is number two?
Yep. Number three, that the reassigned time has not been fully reinstated; and four, that Middle States evaluations has a lack of faculty input, especially with reporting.
Should I put state events?
Number four was the Middle States evaluation has a lack of faculty input. I'd like to address specifically one, but before I do, something came up tonight. I'd like to just mention that you heard from an ex-administrator and a faculty about something that I'd like to suggest, had the Tech Funds Committee been in existence, that you may never have heard about it, because it would be shared governance. We would both have input, and the matter may have been resolved before it ever got to you. I think that committee is very important. As you know, that has to be, in the past, submitted for approval by the Tech Funds Committee, and they're using tech funds for that endeavor. So I think that shows a lack of shared governance right now, and I think that committee was very important. But specifically, I'd like to talk about the foundation. When I first heard the news, I was overjoyed at the change of administration. And to some extent, I think I've been quiet. In fact, I mentioned to one of the board members who's not here that I expect you won't be hearing from me, but I also had hopes that some of those policies didn't be reversed, and sadly, they have not. Specifically, I'm concerned about the foundation because in 2007, I had created a scholarship in my name along with three other colleagues, and sadly, we are not contributing to that scholarship anymore. I'd like to suggest that the board look into the lack of funds that have been submitted, donated to the foundation in light of a lack of transparency, and make a comparative analysis to previous years. I think that would be very enlightening. Also, at the November 25th, 2012 meeting, a board member, and perhaps more than one, suggests that they have no control over the foundation. I'd like to highlight the fact that we have two trustee, well, one trustee and Dr. Saunders on the Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay. I would like to just mention that I'd like to congratulate you for your application, and that I hope that a reversal of these policies forthcoming will allow us to count that as for our faculty support. I'd also like to mention, and let me just read, at that event that you mentioned, Care for Sandy Restoration, we had faculty, staff, administration, and student representation all working together. And I'd like to hand out the Student Art Competition event, which Dr. Saunders will be there, I'm told, and Mr. Lard will be there, and previously, Anthony Cornaccio, trustee Cornaccio, was at that event last year, by team by all the Board of Trustees members. Thank you very much.
Just while you hand this out, just an answer, I'll give you. The Tech Fund Committee made decision on what we spoke about earlier today, and it's not there because of the reassigned time? Is it because of the reassigned time, or there's something else?
There are four points. One was reassigned time for the Academic Senate, and the Tech Fund, the dissolution of the Tech Fund Committee was a completely separate issue, as far as I know.
I think Dr. Saunders has something to say.
I would like to, as best I can and as succinctly as possible, respond to each of the issues that you've put on the table. And I'd like to begin with the foundation. There has always been an interest on the part of this administration to address the issues of the foundation. As I had articulated in the General Faculty Meeting when the issue was brought up at the end of that meeting, the administration, and I personally, had met with the Academic Senate Executive Committee and requested a meeting on behalf of the foundation's executive body and board to discuss issues and concerns that the faculty had as it related to issues regarding the foundation. They had also said that after they had that meeting, they would be willing to meet with the Academic Senate body to further discuss issues and concerns. That meeting had originally been scheduled for October of last fall. That meeting was canceled by the Academic Senate's executive body because there were other issues related to the concerns as it related to the filing of the tax forms. As a result of that cancellation, the foundation was waiting for another meeting to be scheduled because we were told, and I was at that meeting, that until that matter had been resolved, and that until Kimberly's attorney was satisfied, and Kimberly was satisfied that the issue had been resolved, they were not willing to have any other discussions in the go-forward fashion as it relates to that. We addressed that issue at the conclusion of the General Faculty Meeting, and we said that we would schedule subsequent meetings, and those meetings are being scheduled as we speak. So there has always been an intent to resolve issues in a shared governance fashion, and for these types of concerns to be reiterated in different public forums, with some of the participants who are aware of the nuances that I'm sharing with you now to be silenced, is disconcerting for me. Those are my comments as it relates to the foundation. I understand that there is going to be a meeting that is scheduled this month with the Academic Senate Executive Committee and the foundation, and we will address the issues and come to some resolve in terms of how we will move forward. In regards to the release time, we talk about shared governance. The issue went back and forth between the administration and the faculty as it related to release time, and ultimately, it was brought before the Board of Trustees to make a decision in terms of how it should be handled. The Board of Trustees made a decision, which is the shared governance process. We honored that position. When the issue was brought to me by the Academic Senate Executive Committee in terms of whether I would reconsider and add the additional time, my response to them was, I would do that in the next year, but I would honor the decision of the Board of Trustees. We have just finished the cycle of reviewing all of the requests from every constituent group and area on campus as it relates to release time. We have made our decisions in terms of how we're going to handle that, and as I and my executive vice president shared with the chairs this afternoon, the letters of notification of that release time will be going out tomorrow. The issue in terms of representation with the Middle States, there has always been faculty representation with Middle States. There is not an instant as it relates to the Middle States process where there hasn't been faculty involvement. There were some concerns that were brought to me by the Academic Senate Executive Committee in regards to the content of the progress report, and they were questioning whether the comments in the progress report were in fact accurate. We had scheduled a series of meetings to discuss that. Then I was asked if I would write a response to the written responses that the Academic Senate Executive Committee had identified in their report, and I told them it was not a good investment of my time to write a response to issues and concerns that we could discuss as a body and use the outcome from those discussions as the guiding principles in terms of how we would manage and handle the Middle States review process in a go-forward fashion. As it relates to the tech fee, it might have been in October or November, there was a discussion with the chairs as it related to the change of the tech fee and the request to bring it back to its original format. There had been a back and forth discussion as it relates to that, and we left that issue on the table that if we were going to make a change, it would include all of the chairs and not just a subset, and that would be the compromise to which we have not gotten a final response. Every one of the issues that you have identified this evening has been addressed in one format or another, and has been done in a manner to embrace the shared governance process, and yet, we get meeting after public meeting where it is presented as if there is no regard for what the issues and the concerns are. We talk about being engaged in active and vigorous debate. That doesn't necessarily mean that at the end of the day, the final result will be what was requested, but it should be some outgrowth of the discussion.
I appreciate your response. I'm not used to the response. So maybe I allowed 20 seconds just to comment on those points, please.
Give me 30 seconds.
Thank you very much. With regards to your first comments about the Academic Senate and personal matters relating to Kimberly Reiser, I am a senator, and I can assure you that no such correspondence happens in terms of a general announcement to the senators about the foundation and delays in meeting. And nevertheless, I would like to call for a meeting. But just in general terms, I'm trying not to comment on the shared governance as it stands today. I don't necessarily have a complaint about that. I'm actually asking for a direct reversal of these policies. Secondly, I would just like to mention that I served on Middle States, and I can assure you that the procedure now is very different. When I served on Middle States, I was an ongoing part of the committee as a faculty member and the reporting process.
Thank you. Thank you. Ed Voight.
I'm going to yield my time to Dr. Reiser.
Good evening.
I'm quite startled by what I just heard, and I would like to read from the Academic Senate meeting, or last meeting in which I responded to some of these issues. At the General Faculty Meeting, Dr. Nicholson referred to the lack of transparency with the NCC Foundation and his hope that Dr. Saunders would reverse the cloak of secrecy that surrounds the foundation, which was instituted by the AESTRAV administration. In his response, Dr. Saunders put the responsibility squarely back on the shoulders of the Executive Committee. The Executive Committee does not have the authority to insist that the foundation be open and transparent. Dr. Arthur Freeman, the elected faculty representative, I, as Senate Chair, and the faculty at large, did the most we could possibly do to insist on openness with the foundation. Dr. Freeman and I worked diligently and professionally as foundation board members. We took our jobs seriously. We worked hard at the task of being a board member. We reviewed and recommended changes to the bylaws and asked questions about the finances as per our fiduciary responsibility, despite the fact that we were not appointed to committees. In Fall 2011, the foundation hired a private attorney who rewrote the bylaws and advised the board members to sign a conflict of interest statement and confidentiality statement. Dr. Freeman and I signed the conflict of interest statement, but not the confidentiality statement, because we believed we had the responsibility to report back to our constituents about the foundation, and I was subsequently chastised for precisely doing so. Currently, the faculty has been specifically excluded from the foundation unless the board invites a faculty member of its choosing to serve. The change in the bylaws promoted by the board's attorney eliminated the ex officia membership of the Chair of the Academic Senate, the elected faculty representative, and the president designated of the Alumni Association. This academic year, in Fall 2012, the Senate Office received a call from the Chair of the Foundation Board, Mr. Clark, who wanted to, quote, "get to know me and have a cup of coffee." This was at the same time when the NCCFT discovered from the foundation tax returns that Michael Freeman, previous Board of Trustees Chair, and I were listed as having received substantial compensation from the foundation. Because of the seriousness of the matter, I hired a private attorney who advised me not to speak to any member of the Foundation Board. The Executive Committee discussed this point with Dr. Saunders. At the General Faculty Meeting, Dr. Nicholson was speaking to his hope that the college's chief executive officer, our president, Dr. Saunders, would insist that the foundation be transparent in its work. Because Dr. Saunders has a seat on the board, it is our hope that he will ask that the bylaws be amended to return the elected faculty representatives to the board. We also hope that he will reconstitute transparency and rebuild the trust that has been lost. The Executive Committee has scheduled a meeting with the Executive Committee of the Foundation In terms of the other comments that were made by Professor Gorman and Dr. Saunders responded to, I can say that I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. And as you know, this is the first time in four years, as my position as Academic Senate Chair, I decided not to speak. But I felt compelled to speak in response to Dr. Saunders' comments. I can say that the Academic Senate is extremely concerned about what has happened with Middle States, our accrediting body. A report was sent to Middle States in October without any consultation with the faculty. We were absolutely shocked when, in the General Faculty Meeting in November, Dr. Saunders informed the faculty that a report had been sent to Middle States. May I remind you that last year, under the AESTRAV administration, a 162-page, I think it was, report was sent to Middle States by the administration. The faculty asked to see the report. We were not allowed to see the report. We asked, and we asked, and we asked. And then finally, in the AESTRAV administration, we were allowed to see the report, but we could only read it online and we could not print it. At the General Faculty Meeting...
Thirty seconds.
I might as well stop now, because I have a lot to say in response to Dr. Saunders' allegations.
Marilyn Monroe.
I'm gonna read this so I can stay on the point. I'm a little annoyed and a bit angry, but I'm, I'd like to talk to first, that I appreciate the opportunity to speak again tonight. It was my intention to share Mr. Cronacio's response, though he read it earlier, that he sent to me regarding the letter that I sent to him and I read at the last Board of Trustees meeting. I also intended to share my response to that letter and copies are with my colleague, who she will share with the board before I leave. However, I just received and just opened this evening a more pressing correspondence that demands sharing with all present. Again, please bear with me as I read. I'm genuinely insulted. I'm appalled. I received this in the mail. This is from Mr. Cronacio's personal email, was sent Friday, March 22nd at 12:17 a.m. It's sent to his fellow board members. The subject is ALANA. I think I got, please allow me to read this. I think I got this ALANA matter worked out. I met most of them that evening after the meeting. Marilyn Monroe made a beeline for me. I told her I knew Apafa, find that insulting, but nonetheless, it ied very well. We talked, didn't agree, but she understood my position and we kissed before we parted. Anissa Moore is the youngest looking and very pretty. I think she's the Chair of the Communications Department. She is very reasonable, vivacious, unobtrusive, charming, accommodating, and has a great sense of humor. I took a shot at her. I said, Craig Wright, who is on the search committee, isn't he a member of ALANA? She said he was, but then said the real complaint was that there aren't enough faculty on the panel. Ms. Montgomery, I forgot her first name, came to me and said that he missed my brother and Lloyd Glenn. She knows that Lloyd and Aretha Glenn are close friends of mine for more than 30 years, and I told her that we went to June, his son's wedding in Florida. She still has her position, but understands mine, and we hugged and kissed and she laughs. That tall black guy is a thug, and he has an agenda, not known as a nice person. Today, I learned that ALANA includes many administrators as well as teachers. I have some faculty people speak to some of the ALANA people, including Anissa Moore, who is the President of ALANA.
It's time.
Okay, go ahead. No, I have, I have time.
Yes, I'm on the, I'm on the, I defer my time to Marilyn Monroe.
So defer.
They would not, okay, this is in President of ALANA. They will not, they would not insist on increased seats if they were able to sit down with people on the search committee as their point people. It is an extension of what George said at our meeting. Only I could announce it, send it up on all NCC, and assign it to members of, assign members of the committee as point people for the diverse group. Laura Corin, for example, could be the point person for the Women's Faculty Association. For example, ALANA would be able to go to Kimberly as their rep. The Jewish group would be able to go to Debbie as its, as its rep. Anissa said that the rep did not have to be black, and she could be quoted for that and would favor a deal. I am not in the habit of quoting anyone, and I hope not. Now I just have to find time to write it off. This is what I got. Mr. Cronacio, I know you said you know my father, but one thing you might not know about my father, he didn't birth any daughters. So I want to know, are these words indicative of your statement that you wrote to me in your first response, that the trustees nevertheless assure you that they are sensitive to the needs of each of the college's constituency group? End of quote. Is this type of offensive and discriminatory language definitive of sensitivity? Mr. Wright, as the College Affirmative Action Officer, I would like to meet with you to explore what steps may formally be taken regarding the sexist and racist language of this email.
I defer my time to Anissa Moore.
Is it your statement that I sent you that email?
No.
Okay.
I don't know where it came from.
I will legally be here if anyone would like to take it.
But it was written by you. That's, that's the concern.
I look to the opposite. Demetrius Watkins.
I defer my time to Anissa Moore.
Anissa Moore. Six minutes. Furuk. Six minutes.
Good evening, members of the board, colleagues, friends, members of the community. I'm just gonna move forward with the letter that I intended to read tonight. So my heart is heavy. Dear Board of Trustees, my name is Anissa Moore, and I have served as a member of the NCC community for 17 years. Within the past 17 years, I've had the opportunity to serve this institution as a faculty member, an academic chairperson, and most recently for two years as the Dean of Social and Behavioral Sciences. I've had the opportunity to form alliances, build strong relationships with many people who are in this very room. I have embraced campus leadership and thrive within this unique shared governance structure at NCC, but I am an exception rather than a rule. The majority of people of color have experienced feelings of isolation, invisibility, or have felt disrespected as professionals. As an educator dedicated to the issues of social justice, tonight I'm speaking on behalf of ALANA, the African, Latino, Asian, Native American Faculty and Staff Alliance. As a faculty member of color, I too found myself isolated, but found solace in ALANA, the Women's Studies Seminar, the Literary Theory Committee seat, and the Academic Senate Committees. This is where I found community at NCC. But having formed alliances and friendships over the years has not made me immune to the politics of invisibility, unfair treatment, or being labeled the other. As a faculty member of color, I was scolded and accused of stealing college property by senior faculty members for walking into my own classroom and grabbing a piece of chalk on more than one occasion. I've been asked to lead the faculty parking lot on several occasions by members of public safety, and at first I thought it was a compliment, but when I pointed to the faculty sticker, I was still denied. In North Hall, after entering a faculty bathroom, everyone exited saying, "Let's come back, it's too crowded." On several occasions, some of our South Asian faculty have had verbal insults hurled at them by students as they were walking to the cafeteria. I will never forget my dear colleague, the late Errol Hibbert, who refused to wear casual clothes to work because he was assumed to be a maintenance worker on several occasions. More recently, the African American, Caribbean American faculty within the nursing department arrived at work only to find the most vicious and hateful racist epithets displayed in their classrooms. The college never officially condemned these vicious acts, and the college community was never informed regarding the final outcome. While all of these events can be shared during a private session at the Affirmative Action Office, we still suffer in silence. Why do many choose silence? They understand if you ask for something that is reasonable, you will be dismissed or perceived as being angry or militant. What others fail to realize is that we're simply asking for something that anyone else would ask for if they were in this position, just like this evening. Sometimes we must deal with invisibility, but just because you have never experienced it doesn't mean it isn't real. The politics of invisibility are costly to one's promotion, one's ability to get elected to college-wide as well as departmental committees, all processes that drive this institution. This has caused many faculty of color to remain isolated, and others choose anger or to simply disengage in campus life. I've worked hard for the past four years as a President of ALANA to motivate others as well as to form alliances to promote healthy dialogue. In the words of Langston Hughes, "I swear to the Lord, I still can't see why democracy means everybody but me." So we must ask the question, why are faculty of color once again being ignored? We respect the search committee's desire to work expeditiously, efficiently, and effectively for the presidential search. Moreover, it is encouraging to witness the board and the entire campus community become so invested in this presidential search process. We strongly share the same passion and desire to participate. Furthermore, it is important to express that our union and faculty governance leadership has successfully voiced the concerns of the overall faculty body. As members of ALANA, we have total confidence in our union and faculty governance leaders, the strong advocates, and we are proud to have them fighting for us. However, there is one unique fight that can only be articulated by a faculty member of color. The experiences that faculty of members of color possess, this is indeed the voice that has not been excluded, that has been, that has not been included in this democratic inclusive process. Faculty of color equally participate within campus life. Should we not contribute to this critical search process? A comprehensive search must include the other parts of the college community. In addition, we're extremely pleased to learn that the Affirmative Action Officer has been appointed to the Presidential Search Committee. For point of clarification, Mr. Wright is not an official member of ALANA. In accordance with our bylaws, ALANA membership is solely granted to faculty and staff. As the Affirmative Action Officer, he complies with one of the mission objectives of ALANA, to encourage close communication with the, and I quote, "to encourage close communication with the Affirmative Action Committee," which is a committee that I presently serve as the Chair of within the Academic Senate, comma, the President and his or her academic affirmative action designee. Thus, Mr. Wright supports the ALANA organization by his fulfillment of our mission statements. Once again, we are pleased that he is a part of this committee. However, the everyday experiences of a faculty member of color cannot be articulated by an administrator who happens to be a person of color or anyone else but a faculty member of color. Let us remember that diversity is not simply racial or ethnic. I think I have some other time somewhere. I have time back there. But cultural as well as intellectual. Diversity connotes differences of opinion as well as experience. Let us also remember that unity does not mean uniformity, it means oneness of purpose. As faculty of color who join the teaching ranks at NCC, we are committed to public higher education and the ideals of shaping a robust academic affairs, academic affairs structure which includes diversity and inclusion.
I'm just gonna ask a question that I think I know the answer to. Joylette Samuels-Williams, you yield your time?
Yes.
Can I just hear her say it?
She's gonna, she's ready.
Professor Rockman-Hart, Criminal Justice and the founding editor of ALANA votes in. I yield my time. I'm one of the scheduled speakers.
Thank you.
That's two minutes.
Okay, yes. We are committed to public higher education, the ideals of shaping a robust academic affairs structure which includes diversity and inclusion at its center. We join with all of our colleagues in our desire to select the best candidate for college president. It is our hope that our new president will seek to facilitate healthy campus dialogue to address issues of diversity and inclusivity. It is important also, it is also important to point out the cabinet is no longer racially diverse. One person of color, the acting president, remains at the table. Interestingly enough, the college was lauded for its diversity within the cabinet according to the most recent civil rights site visit in 2011. The present structure communicates to the entire college community that equity and diversity is not a priority. We humbly submit to you tonight to appoint a member of ALANA to the search committee. May the words of Max Dupree inspire all of us this evening. We need to give each other the space to grow, to be ourselves, to exercise our diversity. We need to give each other space so that we may both give and receive such beautiful things as ideas, openness, dignity, joy, healing, and inclusion. We look forward to hearing from you. Thank you, everyone.
I was under the very impression that Mr. Craig is a member of ALANA until now. Now, I know Craig is also here. If you can just, you know, tell me, when, like, did he, when was the last time he was part of membership, I guess, or was he ever?
Again, based on our bylaws, he's not an official member of the organization. He supports our organization. We have many administrators who support the, our, our organization, where I think this is where the miscommunication is coming in. There are people who always support us, but they're not allowed to officially join us because only faculty and staff can be a part of the organization. We even allow students, but administrators cannot officially be on record as members.
Now, how do you determine, and it's like the difference between supporter and official member? Like, what's different? Because I understand they both give a big call.
Because we have, we call them, with many organizations, we have friends of ALANA. There are people who support us. For example, we have what we call the NCC Blackmail Initiative. So we invite administrators, faculty, and staff to serve as mentors. So that's a way that other people show or lend their support to the organization.
And, and just another concern, I understand, I see that, you know, obviously this is a concern of diverse representation. Do you feel in any given way that the committee is set up right now, in any given way, that it's perhaps you, you can access to them or you can communicate with them in a way that you feel comfortable?
Right. It's not about the access. As communicated in my letter, we're comfortable with the fact that we do have access. Again, because this is a faculty and staff alliance, all of our leadership is represented within the search committee. What we're asking for is a person of color who is a faculty member to be a part of that conversation. Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Seeing no response. Mr. Volker.
Thank you for your time and members of the committee, Board of Trustees. It's Professor Volker. I am an adjunct professor in philosophy and I hold a doctorate, all my three master's degrees on my head.
We didn't want to have a forum.
And so, I just want to say, I want, I would like to know, I haven't spoken, well, clearly, who I'm speaking to, so I take it that this is the Board of Trustees. Now, I see there's a right angle here, and I was wondering, what is your role here, Mr. Ramin? What is, who are you?
My name is Furuk, and I'm the student trustee. I pretty much represent the student's perspective and also bring out the light of the campus that I experience myself to the board.
Okay, well, I noticed you asked a lot of questions, which certainly you did a good job, obviously. And Mr. Cronacio, who are you?
I'm a trustee.
Yeah, well, I know that.
I'm a trustee.
You're the trustee, okay. And Mr. Powers?
I'm someone, trustee.
You're a trustee also.
I just want to clarify that the fact the way it's set up doesn't really mean anything. It's just the way you have to get arranged for the viewing. So it's everybody, everybody is the same.
Maybe someone's left with that.
Right, but it doesn't mean we're on the right.
Right.
Well, I want to discuss and talk and affirm ALANA's need to be on the board and to be on the search committee. And I say to my students, listen not to me, but to the logos, and know that it is one. See, that's how I'll put it, so how I apply it, is however you want to pronounce it. And what, what does that mean? That means that you have to not listen just to the words, you have to listen to the contextuality of, of, of how, of how the words, of what I'm speaking in, how I'm speaking out of, what I'm speaking out of, and what you're listening out of. And what are we speaking out of here in Nassau County? We're speaking out of and within and around the most segregated county in the United States. But that's just said a little bit. We're so used to, it, it, people are just so used to that, that this is the most segregated. Some would say, no, not the most, prove me wrong, please. This is the most segregated county in the United States, and are we a part of it? We belong to that context. It's not like we're apart from it, we're a part of it. And whether we do anything or not do anything, just by breathing and being, we're cooperating with it. I would like to think that Nassau Community College is part of the solution and not part of the problem. And so, all the more reason for the search committee not to make an exception because of the situation in which we find ourselves, but to understand the need and necessity of having a person of color on that select committee. of having a person of color on that select committee. And people say, oh, we have people, we have an administrator who's a person of color. Excuse me. Just as Mr. Cronacio's letter indicated, we can get to people through relationships. We all know that. We can also get to people who are administrators, who are paid. We need someone who is independent.
Thank you, Professor Volker. Thank you.
We need someone who is independent. And I stand for, I stand for an independent person from ALANA on that select committee. Thank you.
I was yielding my time to ask.
Okay, he walked away.
I plan to yield my time. Considering the things that I'm reading here on this note, that is absolutely appalling and a disgrace that a trustee could make these commentaries. I happen to be that tall black guy that's a thug that has been here for 45 years. Professor Emeritus, suffered in the civil rights movement in Mississippi with SNC and have been a civil rights activist for my total life, just honored by the NAACP, United Negro College Fund. And to be called a thug, the tall black guy, is not only appalling, but is this the type of people that we allow to sit in judgment professionally on an issue of a presidency? Having someone like that is having a child molested a babysit for you.
To be put aside, and I'll ask the professors, one professor I'd like to speak about, Barry Fruckt. Barry Fruckt is ace. Paul Brinhaming. I don't take responsibility for anyone over my class size. I love you guys being here because you give us push, you give us emphasis. He's a great man. I really liked Barry. I've had him three or four times. But I wish the school would address this and think about this, which is pretty important to us seniors. And we go from 400 students to 150. To me, is a disgrace in the, in the school.
We'll give it to a committee at the end of the, of the committee.
Excuse me, excuse me. Can I clarify the, can I answer his question? Because I know the answer. Okay, the policy. No, I never, I don't believe.
Can you answer the question in 30 seconds?
Yes. The policy for two senior observers per class was established by the department chairs committee and approved by the academic senate sometime in the early 1990s. I don't remember the exact year, but we do have the resolution book. It's available in the resolution book and we can send it to if you want. So it's academic chairs committee, academic senate, and I assume it was approved by the trustees then. That's, that's the policy that's on the book. And so, if anybody has any other questions.
Well, what is the criteria for class size? You mentioned.
The, the, one, like, when you reach that limit. There's all kinds of different things that go in. There's a fire code limiting the classroom.
Well, that's what I would say that.
Some of our classrooms have very specific class limits. Others, like in developmental education courses, they are limited for the obvious reason that students in developmental classes may need more faculty attention. There's accreditation rules for like nursing and allied health. There's a number of lab stations available in a room. So there's all kinds of things that go into determining the size of the class.
But generally, it's fire code.
That's one of the considerations. That's one consideration, but there are other things. I can't really speak to that. I don't know because I'm in the history department, so I don't know what the particular rules. And there's also a contractual issue for the NCC FD. But I assume the nursing accrediting body, the allied health accrediting body, have specific limits on those. There's the fire code limits and, you know, a great few things.
Now, let me ask you a question. I know it was done in 1990 when this was established. Now, I know obviously we have an increase in students. Does, is there a way to look into that? As far as, because we have increased the student, maybe increase.
Look into what exactly?
Population's getting older in the county.
Right. Look into.
Well, I mean, look into, back in 1990, I don't know the exact number of students we had. Based on that student, we selected two senior maximum class. Now we have a different number.
Right.
Now, with that number, maybe we can.
It's certainly something that could be worked into. But it's something we're talking about. I know Neil Yoman personally.
And I just want to say, personally, as a student, if we have 29 students in a class, and that's the maximum as a fire regulation and codes, you know, I see where the problem comes in, but I'm pretty sure, you know.
But why, but why are you agreeing with a class semester? Why can't you, you ask professors to change the rule without a lot of problems and then say?
That's, that's, there's no way. The professor has no authority to change the rule. That's what I'm going to say. If anybody has, I'll resume my seat.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Thanks very much. The next finance and capital committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday. Received one more.
Just, it's a statement from a student who was going to come here. They couldn't come. They just want me to just state it on the, on the meeting. It'll be really quick and short. Dear Board of Trustees, I'm a current student here at Nassau Community College and I go to as well as enjoy to various activities provided. I have noticed that Top Flight has a food truck in front of G Building. I think it's a great idea. I love the fact that Top Flight is branching out off the basement of CCB. It's enjoyable to get my food from the truck and just enjoy the strange air. A couple of months ago, Student Organization of Latinos, also known as SOL, hired a Cuban truck known, known the time as the Bingo Brothers. The placement of the truck was the same in front of the G Building. As I recall, the truck was forced to move from the location because it was a folk fire hazard. Public safety was even, public safety even got involved. I would like to know why, why that happened to them. Here, the Top Flight truck is able to do the same without any penalty. The Cuban truck was forced to move to the faculty parking in front of G Building, not only causing traffic that was held up, but also putting in danger the student body that was waiting in the huge line that was formed. I don't believe the Top Flight truck should be moved. It's the perfect, it's the perfect spot for it, but I do believe that the other truck should get the same treatment. Sincerely, concerned student. And I just, a student also reached out to me.